Update and he wants to understand a little bit about what we're doing or how it was done. Please feel free to ask those questions. You can use the chat functionality. You can use, and I'm just letting everybody in from the waiting room. You can use the chat functionality. You can raise your hand and ask a question here. However, you like to do it, feel free, but that is, that is where we're up to.
So I'll monitor this. Do you want to use the raise the hands or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at everybody, but again, feel free to unmute yourself and ask any questions you have about the protocols. That's the purpose of these town halls. That's why there's five of them. It is not to teach you the protocols. You have that's the purpose of the videos that we put together for you guys. And again, you should be able, you should let everybody that you work with know that these videos are available and you can. And these, these town halls will be available all month so that we can meet the deadline of having everybody in service by the end of the month. Doctor. Any question?
Um, I have a question. Hi, I just want to ask, is whoever is here, are you here as an individual provider or are you? An educator for your agency?
Individual provider.
Okay. No agency leadership here, huh?
Looks like there's a few people having some trouble getting on.
Okay.
And the, the, the purpose of this, the purpose of these town halls is to give you the opportunity to ask any questions you have. About the protocols, the rationale behind any decisions we made and so on.
Um, how does everybody feel about the new format of the protocols, the way they're set up with CFR, EMT and medic? Does that make it easier to understand the protocols? Have you all seen that?
Do we have, we have a question here. Ahmed, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you can go right ahead and ask your question.
Uh, hello guys, it's Ahmed. So I was going through these protocols after making it to a booklet. And I noticed in the anaphylactic adult pediatric protocol that you can give a doanabibutoropetroprium in conjunction for a total of. Three doses, but in the COPD asthma wheezing protocol, it has albuterol as a, until the patient. Improves until improvement of the patient. So my question is, in that case, you can give as much of beautiful until the patient improves in the asthma COPD wheezing. But not in the anaphylaxis, we're limited to three doses for both.
So I would say that the. The rationale is that if you're at, if you're at more than three doses of a nebulized treatment in an anaphylaxis protocol. And your patient is not improving, you probably are doing the wrong thing at that point. That person should be getting epi. Should be getting advanced airway care at that time. If, you know. The, the purpose of albuterol here is to open up the air, is to aid in opening the airway rather than, than treating an underlying medical problem. So I, I would say that I think that the rationale here was that after, after doing. If you, if you're still treating with albuterol, you're probably not addressing the main issue here.
Or that you're heavily delayed on scene.
Correct. Well, I, I wasn't gonna go there, but yes.
We would hope not. And as you see in the key points over here, albuterol, etc., it's very clear in anaphylaxis that it is a maximal of three doses. That was, that's deliberate.
But that's a good question. Thanks for the point.
So I have another question and apologize, but. So we were always told that epinephrine and magnesium sulfate had never to be administered to a COPD patient. As were the previous protocols, it wasn't even in the protocol, but now that the COPD asthma clumped together under one protocol, it's kind of. I mean, you're giving epi to that patient. There's no differentiation between a COPD or an asthmatic. And I just want to know the rationale behind giving that to a COPD patient, considering that they may have underlying cardiac issues going on.
So the, the concern with giving F and F into a patient who's. In COPD exacerbation is that their age and comorbidities would put them at a higher risk because. They're generally older, they're generally more light, there's a higher likelihood that they would have comorbidities. But there's nothing inherently dangerous or wrong with giving epinephrine to that patient. And most. Providers in a, in the emergency room setting, if I have a patient, for example, in the ED who is. Severely in distress and they're a COPD patient, I will most likely administer epinephrine to that patient. Because it's the best, it's the best treatment for that patient at that time, meaning worrying about the, the, the side effects is less of a concern. Than not improving their respiratory status. As far as the magnesium. The feeling is that in asthma, it's been shown to help. It has no benefit or detriment in COPD. So there's really no, no negative to giving it. Does, do you need to give it? It probably isn't. Gonna help, but it's not, there's no negative. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And just if there's no, if there's no positive to it and there's no negative, then I guess avoiding giving it and if this is only a COPD patient.
Say that again?
Well, if there's, i- if it's strictly a COPD patient that hasn't, does not have a history of asthma, then I think if there's no. Positive to it, it doesn't affect COPD patients, then.
Correct. It's, it's not gonna be a negative. I think that in that, in that situation, probably the next step would be to make sure. That, you know, you're, you're using good judgment, you're making smart decisions in terms of how you're managing your patient. But that's, that's the answer to your question.
And for, for COPD, the protocol is clear not, not to give the, the mag. And 16C over here, they're not suggested with COPD, so.
So there's no benefit to it. So it doesn't, and the epinephrine, like I said, if the patient needs epinephrine, or the fact that they might have. A secondary effect from it is probably not as crucial as the fact that you need to give it.
Yeah, I just wanted it to be clear that everybody understands that the COPD is a no for, for. Mag sulfate while epi, you still can, but obviously with caution.
So just to follow up on that, I mean, it happens in the field where you do have a patient that has a history of both. How do you guide your treatment to treat one over the other, or just you treat the wheezing itself?
Say again?
Being that there is a distinction in the protocol and 16C that you don't give those medications for COPD. But a patient has a history of asthma and COPD, how do you use protocols to guide your treatment then?
Well, again, I, I don't think that there's, there's a, we, we did try to get away from this idea that there's one size fits all to the protocols. You do have to use clinical judgment when you're administering these medications and make decisions. If you have somebody who's in severe distress. And needs epinephrine. Then I think that you'd be appropriate to give it. What I think what Morty was saying is that the. The mag is not beneficial and would not be helpful in, in COPD. Right? So the magnesium is something that in COPD isn't gonna help. The epinephrine, if you need it. It, it's listed clearly as a medication where you have to use it with caution. So just. You have to be aware, you have to know what the side effects are, you have to know what the risks are. Doesn't mean you can't use it, it just means you have to know and understand your patient when you're giving it. If you give it without thinking and you didn't think about it and you didn't. Document anything that you knew that you were understanding what was going on, meaning if your patient is tacking away. At 180 beats per minute and in respiratory distress and you said, oh, I'm gonna give epi. You probably didn't think about if it was appropriate to give and probably should have rethought that. If on the other hand, this patient is in severe respiratory distress, wheezing. And that's clearly the focus of their problem and epinephrine would be beneficial, then it would be indicated. Where, again, we're not trying to build protocols that are a cookbook. We, our protocols are a little bit more stringent than the rest of the state because. Of quality purposes, you know, we have to make sure in a system this large, we're giving the best quality. But you still have to think, you have to think through them, you have to make decisions based on what you see in front of you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. My name is Ivo Edwards, paramedic with RCA. Have there been any changes with respect to CPAP and the use for EMTs and paramedics? Other than it just being authorized by the medical director?
I guess, I mean, I don't understand what your, the answer is, is that CPAP can be used. It can be used, but again, it's, it's under the discretion of the medical director as to which level can use it. But EMTs can use CPAP as well, and so can paramedics. Okay, does that make sense?
Yes, yes, of course.
All right.
I have a question if possible.
Go ahead.
How are you? So the protocol is changing to the aspirin. By the way, thank you very much for this update and clarification. The protocol that's for the BLS is changing to 324. And when we come on the scene as EMTs, the question that they asked me was, what if the patient already took 324 of aspirin on their own? Should the EMTs still give their additional when the?
I, I think that this is one of those things.
I don't know if anybody. 24 a day. So. Robbie, you're a little. Would be allowed to administer another 324, is that correct?
Robbie, you're a little choppy, just for everybody's benefit, just want to make sure that.
We have that now, different.
Yeah, better, right? Just I'll, I'll paraphrase your question, just let us know if, if we understood it correctly. Some concerns from, from EMTs out there, not that we know that there are patients really taking 324 to home is most around 81. What should we do about those patients that have taken 324 and we come there for chest pain? Is that, that's your question?
Yeah, so the answer to that question, I think, is, is kind of what we said before. It, it, it's, you know, the protocols are designed for, this is what we do. You should. Always pay attention to what the patient was on. I think that if, if you documented that the patient states that they took 325 milligrams of aspirin. Immediately prior to arrival and you chose not to give it because of that, I think that. Most medical directors would be understanding of that and would, would not have any issues with that. I know I would not have an issue with that. I think that the purpose here is to give a dose of medications that is appropriate. And, and that's why we changed the protocol to be more streamlined with everything else. But if the patient says, I took my aspirin this morning. You know, and you document that, I think that that's appropriate.
Thank you very much.
That said, there's also very little risk to giving twice the amount of aspirin. It's not, on a one-time dose, it's really not gonna be dangerous to anybody.
Any other questions out there?
Yeah, I have a question under the asthma wheezing pediatric protocol. It's gonna be page 86. Under paramedic, step number 15, for patients over two years of age with severe respiratory distress, administer dexamethasone 10mg IVIM. Why did we choose 10mg and not the max adult dose, which is, would be 12?
10mg is pretty much the standard of care in the emergency department.
Is it also because in New York State, they're, they've gone to 10?
Well, I mean, I, the, the reason that, again, we're, the met the. The evidence behind this medicine or the, the literature behind medicine is the same. The science of the med, of the medicine. Whether you're in New York City or New York State is gonna be the same. And reality is, is we wanted to try to mirror the state as much as possible, but the, what we give in the emergency department today. If I'm managing a patient with asthma and I want to give, or, and I want to give. Steroids and I want to use dexamethasone, I'm gonna use 10mg because that's pretty much what the standard is.
Another side question that has been brought to me in the past, and I said I was going to save it for tonight. Is that the dose for dexamethasone in this protocol seems to be somewhat in conflict with the dose for dexamethasone for Peds in anaphylaxis. Where in anaphylaxis, it's weight-based, and over here it's not.
Right. Well, this is for over two years. Generally, if you're under two years, you need to weight base at a point 06, but. Most of the time, 10mg is the safe dose for, for a two-year-old. And in a two-year-old, again, you're gonna, you're giving an IM shot, so it's gonna, it's really, that's the biggest thing.
Anaphylaxis, I think this was the question here. Yeah.
Again, I, that's a medical control option. Correct.
This is standing orders.
So I, again, I, I think that this is. It's, it's a good question. I, I think that the, the standard dosing that we use is 10mg for this. I'm not really sure why that it's not standardized. We have, that's something that we're, our vision is gonna have to be redone.
Yeah, I'll jot it down to take the protocol.
It should be standardized to 10.
This, this is actually what confused me reading the anaphylactic protocol and the other one, that we think this is what actually confused me.
No, that's to the point. I mean, again, it should be consistent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that the protocol committee is aware so that when the next revision comes out, it standardizes the dosing. That, that's one thing that you'll probably see here is a lot more standardization of dosing across this evolution of the protocols. For medics especially when it comes to sedation or, you know, dosing for. Controlled substances, the benzos especially. Any more questions out there?
From Downey.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the nasal noxalene, there's two variations out there, the two milliliter. And the four milliliter. Can you explain how they can be both used on a call or? How is it, how is the dosage just mixed, mixed up and in administration?
I'm sorry, I didn't really understand what you're talking about naloxone?
Yeah.
And what was your question?
There's two variations of dosages that are available. One is the standard two milliliter, one milliliter in each nostril. And the other is the four milliliter all delivered into one nostril.
And you're talking about four milligrams. Two milligrams, but yeah, our protocols allow for either one depending on what you have.
Alright, so the EMT could deliver two dosages of two milliliters or an EMT could deliver.
Milligrams, but yes.
Yeah.
I, I mean, again, it's because that's the, the, the formulary that you have that's available.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Shankar?
Yes.
I believe in the previous version of the protocol, there was, there was a very strict differentiation between the mucosal atomizer device. Which has the, a total of two milligrams and then the commercially available device with four milligrams. And there was a difference, that difference is no longer, it doesn't, no longer seems expressed in the protocols.
Correct, but because again, the, the atomizer device that, I mean, the commercially available device. Is a one-time-use device that you don't have a choice in the dosage that you can give. We wanted it to be clear that if you're using the other. Yeah, so it does say it under the key points that you can use the nasal spray instead of the intranasal dosing that's above. It's really depends on what is available to you. You know, we were getting these atomizers for free, so. In the region, that's why it was put in there.
Yeah, these, these pre-filled sprays, and I think they're still available. We're, we're just being given out. This is also what a lot of patients are, are being given over the counter.
Yes, I, I've been kept at that a number of times with patients, family members who've used the, the four-milligram single-use device.
Yeah, it's a one-shot spray and one side only. Anyone else? Don't be shy. Gotta be some questions.
For those of us who are refreshing, the REMAC exam, will it be more of what we expect to see or will there be some changes when we take it?
So.
I'll let you answer.
So, so we just had a CNC meeting a couple of days ago. The, the exam come Jan- January is going to. Many of the questions stayed the same. Those that haven't changed, well, you know, some things didn't change. Things that did change, the, the test questions have been brought to be in line with what is on the current protocol. So anybody taking the REMAC. January on, they're aligned with the new book.
Right. I, I also will say that if you take the exam today, because of the, of the, the rollout, and I, I've said this multiple times on. REMAC and REMSCO recorded calls. Because the rollout was supposed to implement in July, there is no question on the exam today. That is in conflict because of the two sets of protocols. If there is, that will be corrected in real time. You will not have to come back for another test. That is, that is, it's clear to the test proctors that that is the case. So the, we understand the situation, the, the material. Did not change, meaning the, the medicine did not change, so the information should be the same on the exam. But if you were to find a question that says that, you know, that you can miss it, you can interpret different ways based on the two protocols. That will be corrected in real time in person. But it doesn't.
Question about sepsis in the adult protocol.
Sure.
That's page 97. So under the paramedics order, standing orders, you have. 17C is dopamine, five mikes to 20 IV drip. That wasn't there in the previous. Or the current REMAC protocols. I'm wondering why dopamine would be given to that max dose in a septic patient who may. It may not have a heart rate greater than 150, for example.
Wait, say that again? This, this language, the, the dopamine language here is, is the same dopamine language that's in the. Cardiogenic shock protocol, and if that's the only presser you have, you'd be able to use it in the sepsis protocol similar to any other presser. So it, it, it's just streamlined the language to make it consistent with what you carry. You don't have to have all these options, but if you have dopamine, you can use it if you don't have anything else.
Right, and it does, that does happen in the field, but then what if the septic patient is near 140, 150, 160? Would you still be giving that medical control option if that's the only thing you carry? I mean, i- if the other option would be push those epi, which you can make.
So I will tell you that in, in, I mean, this is, is a medical control option, if I'm correct, right?
That should be standing order, the on.
Again, my point, I guess, my, my point is, is that you should be giving fluids first. You should be treating this patient with fluids first. This is a shock protocol, so it's, it has all of the different shock components in it. Which is why it's not just a sepsis protocol, it's a shock protocol. And therefore, that's why the dopamine moved here because it was in the cardiogenic shock protocol previously. The reality is, is you should be giving, unless they're in cardiogenic shock, you should never get to the point of giving oppressors in sepsis. Not, I mean, you really shouldn't, you should be giving fluids. Does that make sense?
Nope, that's understood, thank you.
This is a question about the, the patient that was.
Ahmed, you used your question already. No, go ahead, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
You weren't him, Joe, let him have another one.
I said, Matt, you used your question already, but now you can have another one.
It's always a pleasure to talk to you too, Dr. Shankar. No, just, I was just wondering if that, that last question was, was the, was it really about a patient that is tachycardic and the administration of dopamine? Increasing their rate? Was that, was that, was that the start of that question?
I guess that's not a question for me, that's a question for Ahmed.
Well, yeah, that was, that was the first part of the question, yeah.
Okay, I mean, but I would see that all of these things would potentially increase their rate, not just the dopamine. I just want to, I just want to be sure I was understanding the question correctly.
No, yeah.
Again, I think that it, remember that this is a shock protocol now, it's not just sepsis. It has everything retained to shock in it. So if the shock is hemorrhagic, you should be giving fluids. And fluids and then more fluids. If the shock is septic, you should be giving fluids. And then fluids and then more fluids. And if for some reason, you haven't been able to give three liters of fluids to your patient and you're still in the ambulance. Then we should talk about pressers. Really, the only time that presser should be considered in a, in a patient in New York City in an ambulance. Is if it's a cardiogenic shock patient whose volume is almost maxed out and, and you know, they're kind of getting almost like a little. Pulmonary edema-ish and need to get pressure support. So these options are here for shock, but. Again, remember how the appropriate management of shock should go in these patients.
Anyone else? Bueller?
Alright, so listen, again, this, this is an opportunity and you should tell anybody. Anybody else that you work with. These, uh, these town halls will be held all month in order to give people the opportunity to address questions that they might have with the protocols. It's, th- these are not designed to sit here and go through them line by line, but really to address your questions and your concerns. And make sure that everybody is on the same page because I'm sure that, you know, the initial. Training was designed to be an in-person training and because it's a video-based training now, you don't have the opportunity to ask questions, so. That's what we're here for. And I, I think, listen, again, that there's, if anybody has any other questions, I'm more than happy to entertain them. If there aren't any other questions. We can move on and there'll be another one of these, I think, on Tuesday.
I have one last question, Dr. Shankar.
No, we appreciate the question, that's important.
Hey, go for it.
So looking at the shock slash sepsis protocol for adults, I don't see a synchronized cardioversion. But under the pediatric protocol, I, there is a synchronized cardioversion for VTAC with a pulse or unstable SVT. So is that, I know the protocol is lumped together between substance and shock, so does that kind of pertain to more shock or?
Well, there is a dysrhythmia protocol for adults that would address. You know, giving cardioversion to an adult. Does that make sense?
Um, yes, it does. A second part of that would be, what if the defibrillator is not able to deliver the calculated dose when you're synchronized cardioverting for a pediatric?
No, I, I guess, what do you mean it's not able to get, deliver the calculated dose?
Meaning it's not the exact, it's not able to give the exact dose that you, the one to two milligrams, I'm sorry, the one to two joules. Per kilogram. It's not the exact thing. So would you go up or would you go down on the monitor?
So you're saying because the patient's weight is not exact, it might be 12.5 joules, is that what you're, what you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think you can go. Yeah, I, I think you can go either way. You could probably go to 12, you could probably go to 13. Most monitors these days are biphasic, which means they will calculate impedance and protect the patient. So giving a little bit of a higher joule setting would not hurt the patient in any way.
We have a question in the comments here. Or anaphylaxis, give epinephrine as a standing order, but in asthma, but in asthma, if they are having severe respiratory distress, distress, you should spend the time calling medical control before giving epinephrine?
No.
Yeah, I don't believe that's the case either. Can take another peek at it, though.
Look at it.
Hi, so here's wheezing.
Now, number 11 is standing order, epinephrine. The difference is, is that for anaphylaxis, the epi is, is front-loaded in the protocol versus being further back in the protocol. And the reason for that is because an anaphylactic patient needs epinephrine sooner than a patient who is in asthma, an asthmatic, in a severe asthma. They need to get their, they need to get the, the beta agonist. Is that, I think that that's where people, that's the kind of the confusion, is that it's, it's more front-loaded for, it's also available for CFRs in anaphylaxis and not in asthma, because we don't want CFRs giving epi to asthmatics. Does that answer the question? I don't know the person who's asked it, but.
Yeah, I think even, even, even further, you can see that's in anaphylaxis, it's that pressing that they get it, that it's in, that it's in CFR.
Correct.
Whereas in asthma, it's in.
Yeah, you have to always, I mean, again, it's going to take a little bit of getting used to, but the CFR, the BLS, and the ALS are all in one protocol, so you have to pay attention to that fact and realize that if something is abo- below the CFR bar and above the, the EMT bar, even though an EMT can do it, it limits what the CFRs can do, and you don't want a CFR giving epi to a patient who's in asthma, an asthmatic. You want to give it to an anaphylactic reaction.
Alright, so we got a question regarding the recording, so I happen to be recording it, I don't actually have access to the recording, but I can ask Marie Diglio to post it. At the same time, I'm going to, you know, transcribe the questions and answers, which will, will make like a, you know, an FAQ out of it and, and send that around as well.
We'll try to do that, but again, like, remember that every, every session is going to be different, meaning people are going to ask different questions at different sessions. So just be aware of that. I don't think you need to come to every session. It's really about, if you have a question that you want to understand something in the protocol that you didn't understand, we're here and available to answer that, because we don't have the opportunity, thanks to this amazing virus of meeting in person and doing this in person. Alright.
A little bit of time, if anybody else has questions, speak now, or?
Well, one last thing, if we can just have a review at page 54, bed control options.
Which, which protocols are?
That's the pediatric shock. It's choice C, which says do not perform synchronized cardioversion, unless you can correctly, accurately, deliver the calculated dose, and then number three, where if you cannot deliver the calculated dose, you would go ahead with the denizene. This would be strictly to shock instead of the sepsis. Even though it's on the one protocol.
Well, there's a lot of movement.
Yeah, working my way over there, sorry.
It's page 54.
Well, you gotta look away.
Catch emotion.
Yeah, right?
Get the benzo ready.
Yeah.
There we go. So that's going to be med control options, page 54, choice C, under, under number two, actually. Yeah, so.
Yeah, the calculated dose means that they're able to give, not, not between like, you know, 12, you have to be able to, to turn down your defibrillator to a lower dose if the patient is too small, right? You don't want to give them 100 joules when it, when it's, it's a small pediatric patient. Most monitors can do this, and again, if there's a question, you're, this is a medical control option where you're on the phone with a physician, and they're going to be directing you with your decision.
So some doctor may say, oh, you know what, just give an extra one or two joules more, and another, based on this, step number three, so you go ahead with the denizene, this is my understanding.
Well, again, that would be up to the discretion of the physician. Most of the physicians that are on, on online medical control do have some sense of understanding of what they're doing. Not everybody, but they do have some idea of what they're, they have a rationale, and you should always be, feel comfortable calling after a job and saying, what was the rationale behind that decision? But that, again, I think this is more just to kind of, if you can't physically turn the defibrillator down low enough, that's the issue.
Gotcha.
This is the same as the existing protocol.
Yeah.
This, this medical control option.
Listen, nobody asked, nobody asked for rational opinions, come on!
Always a pleasure talking to you, Dr. Shankar.
I, I had a request that probably will be, will be, I'm sure welcomed by everybody, so if there are two sets of table of contents, one for the GOP, and then there's another one for the, for the regular protocols, and they're clickable, so rather than doing what I've been doing here, which is hitting the Ctrl F and looking to find everything, someone asked if we can have all of the protocol table of contents together at the beginning. That way, it would be easier to search it, so I will certainly put that request into the Office of Remco, so that, so that we can try and make these, this, this book a little more practical for you.
Yeah, the, the formatting does, is, is not as, I mean, it, it would seem that it'd be very simple to just make a change like that, but it actually is a process to get it done, and to get people that can, that can do it, so the, the answer is yes, we are always working to improve the documents and make it easier to, to use, but just understand that it's sometimes not as simple as just clicking a click. Alright, well, let's see, it's, we're 10, it's 4:50. Any final questions before we give you 10 minutes back of your time? If you, we will give, we, we said, I think it's physician contact CME time for this, one hour. If you can just send an email to, I guess, to Marie, to Marie, and obviously, we, we know from who's on this call right now. If you could send an email that you were, that you participated in this call, we will get a CME letter for you.
And put Town Hall in the subject line, so that it's easy for me to find.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody, listen, thank you all for joining us on this first one. If you have any feedback, we greatly appreciate it. Marie's email is mdiglio@nycremco.org.
Thank you very much.
Alright, guys, thank you all for joining us, and any feedback would be appreciated.
Thank you.
My, my email here as well, in case you guys have comments or concerns.
We'll put the, I'm going to type the email into the chat, just so you have it, and I will not log the call out yet, so. So Morty Lax's email is there, and Morty, if you wanted to put Marie's also?
I did, yeah, I'll put it in again.
Oh, yeah, it's above.
Yeah.
Alright, so there's the emails that you need, again, for, for the purpose, just because Marie is the most organized of us all. If you want to get your CME credit, I would send it to her and not to me or Morty, just because there's a better chance to get it signed off by then, by sending.
I'll do my best.
Never seen Marie laugh so hard.
Most organized.
Alright, everybody, thanks for joining us, and I hope you have a good time with the, the update, and if you have any questions, please reach out.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.